Good evening and welcome to our 2022 special fall town meeting. The tellers have informed me that a quorum is present, so the meeting will please come to order. The return of the warrant by the town constable shows that the warrant was properly served, so the meeting is properly constituted. We will begin our meeting as we do every town meeting with the pledge of allegiance. May I ask you to please stand and join me as we pledge allegiance to our flag? I pledge allegiance. Thank you. Some brief introductions before we get into the order of business of the meeting. To my left, your right, we have our Board of Selectmen, Jack Creighton Chair, Jean Healy Dipold Vice Chair, Corey Evans, Paul Grady and Diane Kennedy. We have our Town Manager, Mr. Chris Senior. We have our Town Council, Carolyn Murray. To behind me, to your left and my right, we have our Advisory Board, Rob Hillman Chair, Mary McGoldrick Vice Chair, Jean Astino, Mike Barkley, Fran Collins, Patrick Kennedy, Mark Magzy, Ellen Maher and Meg Wheeler. To my right, your left, here at the table in front, we have our Town Clerk Elizabeth LaJie and the Assistant Town Clerk Beth Anderson. And behind the Advisory Board at the table in the back, we have our tellers, which will do a hand count if we need it. Beth Baker, Phil Faulkner, Susan Hobson and Michael Putzinger. Our guest policy, as it always is, is that any attendees who are not registered voters of the towns have been asked to wear name tags to identify them. As such, you can see the people sitting up here are not registered voters. They will be up there, particularly if we have to do any hand counts. The sections here on the floor, as well as that, that the bleachers on your left and the bleachers on the right will be counted in the case of a hand count. You should have two different little booklets with you that you could have picked up at the table when you came in. One is the stapled on the side warrant, titled warrant, which was mailed to everybody's house. That provides notice of the matters that will be acted upon on each article. The other is the one that's stapled in the upper left-hand corner entitled Town of Cohasset Town Managers Proposed Motions. Those correspond to all the same articles, but they contain the actual text that we will begin debating and that will form the motion that serves as the subject matter for the beginning of the debate. In the interest of time, we don't read them. What happens is as we get to each article, I say rather quickly, may I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? And what I'm referring to is a motion in the form using the words that are in that pamphlet. So then somebody says, so moved. And then what has happened is they've just moved the language that is in that document. So that's the one you should be referring to in the course of the meeting. That is the language we're discussing. We'll vote by voice vote unless I'm unable to make a call on the voice vote, or unless I do make a call and seven or at least seven voters doubt my count and stand up to indicate that they doubt it, in which case we will vote by hand ballot. And when we vote by hand ballot, you will hold up in the air. When I call for it, this little card. So you're going to want to keep that card which you got on the way in handy. Because if there's a hand count, that's what you hold up in the air to signify that you're entitled to vote. If you would like to speak on a motion, please move to one of the microphones to be recognized. Once recognized by me, please begin by giving your name and street address. Only registered voters of the town are permitted to speak at the meeting unless otherwise approved by me. Please keep the debate concise and to the point. All debate must be courteous and respectful. I like to remind people that brevity is both courteous and effective. Sarcasm is never appropriate. Generally, I would ask you not to refer to specific individuals involved in the day in the debate. Just refer to the substance of the point they may have made. So you can disagree with a point, but you don't need to disagree with an individual. Likewise, I think probably a good idea to not refer to anyone else's motives. That doesn't motives don't really matter. We can comment on the substance of the debate without getting into somebody's motives. If you must refer to another speaker's remarks, just because you need to for the sense of the discussion, please still do do so with the utmost respect. If you believe it will be necessary to speak for more than five minutes, please let me know in advance. Because we generally limit debate, limit each person's remarks to five minutes or less. If at any point you have a question about the procedure or the conduct of the meeting, including a concern that I may have done something incorrectly, you should seek to be recognized. Let me know that you have a point of order and then state your question or concern. Finally, last procedural note, many of you are familiar with the moving the question or the motion for the previous question. It brings an immediate vote on the pending motion, so it stops debate. It requires two thirds vote. I'm only going to recognize it after both sides have had a fair opportunity to be heard. And if I've already seen some voters and recognize them as being in line to speak, I may allow them to speak before we proceed to a motion to move the question. I would remind you that you can't both comment on the debate and then make a motion for the to move the question. So if you want to make a motion to move the question, that should be the first thing that you say when you stand up after introducing yourself. Are there any questions on the procedure for the meeting? Very well, we'll jump into the business. Article one amendments to the fiscal 2023 operating budget. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you. The motion has been made. May I have a second? Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. It requires majority vote for approval. I recognize our Town Manager, Chris Senior.
Good evening, everybody. This is a become a regular feature. The state law changed a few years back, which requires town meeting action to move the money that's received from Comcast and Verizon to 143 TV, which runs the town's independent public television. And this would move the money that were received through October 19th, which is $120,000 to 143 TV.
Thank you. The Select Board has recommended approval by a vote of five to nothing, and the Advisory Committee has recommended approval by a vote of eight to nothing. Is there discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote on the motion under Article one. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion has been adopted unanimously. Article two unpaid bills from the previous fiscal years. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. It does require a 90, 90% approval, nine zero percent approval for adoption. I'll recognize our Town Manager, Mr. Chris Senior.
So after a very thorough review, and we had some changes in the finance structure, we had a number of people turnover in the spring. A few things ended up slipping through the cracks. We validated them. All these all really happened. They all really need to be paid. And you can see there's a kind of a random figure of them. So they're all cleared to pay and they all need to be.
Thank you. The Select Board has recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. The Advisory Committee has also recommended approval by a vote of eight to zero. Is there discussion? Again, we'll proceed to a voice vote, motion under Article two. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is adopted unanimously. Article three stabilization funds. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. It does require a majority vote for adoption. Again, our Town Manager, Chris Senior.
The town's financial policies govern the placement of what's called free cash or money that's left over at the end of the year. And the first place they should generally go is to things like this, which is stabilization funds. OPEB is something that we've talked about many times at town meeting. There's an adopted policy and this comports with a funding plan where these are post-employment benefits, which for our purposes are really healthcare in the future. And that would again, this meets the town's adopted policy. There's money going to capital stabilization. Again, that's one of the first places we put money. And then the Special Ed Stabilization Fund was created to help with unexpected expenses that end up with special education. And this is a again, a contribution to that particular fund.
Thank you. The Select Board has recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. The Advisory Committee has recommended approval by a vote of seven to zero. Is there discussion? Mr. Davis and then you also, Mr. Davis and then Mr. Jenkins.
Tim Davis, 257 Atlantic Avenue. On behalf of the Post-Employment Benefits Committee, I'd like to thank the citizens of Cohasset, the Select Board and town government for supporting the plan that the committee had put in place starting about five or six years ago. Today, we have approximately an unfunded liability, OPEB liability of $56.5 million. We are nibbling away at that. But the plan is that when the pension fund roll-off comes, when it's fully funded in 2029 plus or minus, then some of those roll-off funds will go to fund the OPEB trust fund. We hope that sometime, perhaps in your lifetime, if not mine, that will be fully funded. And this is a very strong message to our credit raiders that for our debt, that we have a plan to bring OPEB to fully funded status. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jenkins.
Lee Jenkins, Jerusalem Road. Quick question on free cash. How much free cash do we have left over from last, not left over? How much free cash did we get last year?
The amount that was certified was about two and a half million dollars, I see, or which is within the town's plan, by the way. That's within policy.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote on the motion under Article three. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is adopted unanimously. Article four allocation of funds for one-time costs. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. It does require majority vote for adoption. Again, our Town Manager, Chris Senior.
There are nine items here and I'll quickly walk through them. Anyone who goes to the transfer station knows it's a very large pile that's accumulated a brush and debris. And unfortunately, we have to move it. And it's going to be taken off by a company that does this in the work staffs working to create a new site so we can do more and better composting on site. But it became overwhelming during the pandemic and it's just not, it's not going anywhere. So it has to be removed for safety purposes. CRM system is a customer relations management system. We're working with a company to set up a what amounts to an app. So people will be able to report potholes or out streetlights or things like that, or it'll make it easier and also make it easier for us to track. So if someone's calling on something, we'll be able to track it, know what happened or know it didn't happen and be able to report back to people. So we've got something we're going to unveil in January, but this is, this is a one-year funding. And I think we're actually going to be able to get six months free and then a year in addition. So this funds, the funds for this should carry us all the way through next. The, and the assessors have a periodic specialized reassessment of commercial industrial property. It's a one-time cost. It doesn't come up all the time. So putting it in the budget doesn't make sense. So this just covers a little more extra expense that the assessors need for this year for that cycle. Playground maintenance, there isn't a line item that's going to be going forward in the facilities budget to maintain our playgrounds. So this is just cover facilities through the spring, any little repairs that have to be made here and there. And our sports, anyone's been up there. There's an ongoing public controversy about their future, but we need to maintain them now. They're very actively used. And this will maintain them so that the varsity and JV sports and citizens at large can use them in the spring and beyond. Field reg, as with the baseball fields, we've done a lot more investment in maintaining them. And this will particularly work on Milton and Beachwood Beach, which is by the high school team, among other things. And we really need that extra piece of equipment. They're very hard to get. We can't rent them. And this is more cost effective. The work in the next, the wetlands work ties back to Article 11, which is coming up later in the warrant about improving cell service. Collective bargaining, there are six new contracts. This is the time town signed on the town side, including a deal with the fire union that goes back to FY22. They, they were a year behind everybody. We were in a very long and difficult negotiation, which is now over, which is good. We've managed to settle as we're about to go to arbitration. So we have an extra year that we have to fund of that. And the agreement with the police includes educational incentives that are tied to leaving civil service, which you'll see in Article 13, which is coming up. So there's a little more money in that that was not planned. Also, the SEI clerical union has disbanded. So we're in the process of reclassifying those jobs, reevaluating them, tweaking the positions. So this, this article here will fund all of that. And then last but not least, the owls, if anyone's been on a meeting, the trustees of library, elder affairs or the select board, they're the kind of devices look a little like an owl and they allow to hold a hybrid meeting, an in-person and online meeting. We have two of them. So by three more, it'll allow for more meetings to happen in more places, which is good. Because the goal of the board is to, you know, allow people to access things from home, but some groups still want to try to meet in person. So this allow us to do more of that. And those are the one-time costs.
Thank you. The Select Board has recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. And the Advisory Committee has recommended approval by a vote of eight to zero. Is there discussion? Yes.
This is a simple request.
I'm sorry, please, please.
My name is Amy Glassmeyer. I live at 63 Howe Road. And I would ask that the city manager please raise the mic close to his mouth so that we can hear his lovely voice.
Thank you very much for that request. Sorry. Any other discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote then. Motion under Article four requires majority vote for adoption. All those in favor of the motion under Article under Article four, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is adopted unanimously. Article five capital improvement projects. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. It does require two thirds vote for adoption. I guess, I'm guessing I'm going to introduce first for the Capital Budget Committee, Mr. Brian Host.
I point your attention to the town meter manager's motion as opposed to the warrant as these items have changed on the list. This list is 13. This list is 13 items long. I'm not going to go through it item by item. I'm happy to address any questions that people have with regards to anything they see here. But in summary, we have $729,814 worth of capital appropriations. The majority of that, $479,814 coming out of the Capital Stabilization Fund. The other 250,000 is coming from water retained earnings. And everything on this list has exactly one thing in common, which is why it's on this list tonight, a special town meeting. These items cannot wait for the annual capital appropriation process in the spring.
Thank you. The Select Board recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. The Advisory Committee considered all of the items other than Article three, upon which they do not make a recommendation, but on all the other ones, they make a recommendation in favor by a unanimous vote. And the Water Commission considered projects number seven and 13 as being relevant to the Water Commission and recommended approval by a vote of three to zero for each of those projects. Is there discussion?
Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Pratt.
Glenn Pratt, King Street. I am the Emergency Management Director in Cohasset, and I just wanted to update the meeting on number 13. Number 13 asks for $150,000 to pay for repairs to a water main that broke on South Main Street a couple of months ago. Also, when that happened, it did damage to what we call a critical infrastructure in the town, which is the James Brook culvert under Main Street. Town engineering has plans to have engineering studies done this summer when it's drier and to do some other improvements to the culvert. When the, when the weather allows for that. But because it's a critical infrastructure, it gets in the radar of emergency management. So I just want to make the meeting aware that this $150,000 is most likely not the end of this critical infrastructure repair. So just so you know, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Host.
Just to clarify, and that we will not know what the total number is until this is completely done. But of the 150 that's appropriated here, 120,000 is for costs incurred to date to complete the repair. And there's another $30,000 in this appropriation in anticipation of work on the culvert in the spring, as was suggested. Our best estimate at this time, we won't know until those cameras are in the culvert.
Is there further discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote. Ah, Ms. Jenkins, sorry.
Yes, Leonore Jenkins, Jerusalem Road. I have a few questions about the electric school bus. I was wondering whether or not it will be taking the place of a regular route bus or will it be in addition to the fleet? Also, where is it going to be parked? Because I know currently our buses are parked in the developer's lot on 3A on the Situate Line costing the taxpayers $42,000. Who's going to be maintaining this vehicle? Will it be the same people who are maintaining the regular buses? Do they have the expertise in this? And it, what type of bus is it going to be? A transit style that we already have? Or is it going to be a traditional style? And will it have any type of, if it is going to be a member of the fleet, any type of provisions for putting under bus storage? And one other question I have here too, because I've noted, we've been getting notifications in the Northeast about rolling blackouts in case we have severe cold weather for three days. And if that happens, what happens with the ability to charge this type of vehicle?
So I can address several of these and what I can, as Bodell certainly can, but these were discussed in our capital budget deliberations. The question of whether or not this is buses incremental to the existing fleet will be resolved and addressed candidly when we look at rolling over our existing lease fleet. This bus will arrive roughly simultaneously there, there too. And at that time, we will discuss how many buses are needed. It's that simple. For certain, we will be rolling over at least the entire fleet. And which means there's no problem making this one of the existing fleet. If the school feels that they need more buses, they're going to need to make that case at that time. But this starts as a replacement for one of the existing buses, absent a further argument otherwise. With regards to transit style, we've recommended they go with transit style. Ultimately, once the appropriation is made, the school has the power to do what they feel is operationally correct, but we've certainly have have seen a transit style in our fleet. And I believe that's the right way to go. With regards to maintenance, it's actually the least partner that we've entered or that we will be working with. It's going to be handling all of the maintenance. So this 25,000 includes the maintenance. It's actually a lower number than the all-in cost of leasing and maintaining our existing three, actually four-year-old diesel buses. Okay. So think about that. Four years later, we're actually getting a bus cheaper and maintenance is included. The parking, I think, is still up in the air, but there are several different places that it can be parked. And I think right now they're talking about doing it at the backside of the of the library. And with regards to rolling blackouts, I'll defer it to Ms. Bodell, but my understanding is actually in the context of blast blackouts, this bus can be used to go place to place actually as a source of energy. So it's an interesting question in reverse.
Sure. Ms. Bodell.
Tanya Bodell, 88 South Main Street. I'm the Chair of the Alternative Energy Committee. And this was a demonstration project that we were able to offer up to the school committee for consideration. Brian did a great job answering those questions. I just augment in two ways. Number one is this $25,000 lease covers both maintenance and all electricity. So that's an approximate savings of around $6,000 per year compared to what we're paying right now for an equivalent diesel bus. So it includes all maintenance and electricity. With respect to the rolling blackouts, it can be retrofitted or it can be created in order to be able to provide electricity as a backup resource, if that's what we choose. But if there are rolling blackouts, chances are we're not having school because the school doesn't have backup power, but we're working on that. So those would be my clarifications.
Thank you. Mr. Carr.
Ted, Ted Carr, 88 South Main Street, and I'm a member of the Cohasset School Committee. We did review this item at length. We're excited for this pilot program. In terms of the parking, we are looking at a number of solutions. We are, we are very driven to fix what we have now. It was sort of opportunistic to park the buses where they are now. We will have a better solution in place by the spring.
Thank you. Mr. Pratt.
Glenn Pratt, I'm just to follow up on Mr. Carr. As hard as it is to believe, there is no other place in Cohasset on town land where the buses can be parked. That's why we're leasing the space now. However, as Mr. Carr says, there is a full-blown engineering plan being done right now as we speak, which will be on the property of Deer Hill School, which most likely will be up for consideration in the spring. And it is be complete with charging stations and all the amenities we might need as we go forward.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote. The motion under Article five does require two thirds vote for adoption. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is adopted unanimously. Article six Community Preservation Committee. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. Does require majority vote for adoption for the Community Preservation Committee. I'll recognize Russ Benetti.
Thank you for attending. We're moving right along and I hope we zip right through this one too. This is to help create a open space pavilion, potential for performances and a reading area for the library. The total cost of the program is around $400,000. They came to us for 125,000. We voted unanimously for it and I hope you will too tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. The Select Board has recommended approval by a vote of six to zero. And the Advisory Committee. Actually, I don't have their vote. Thank you. Apparently I missed that in my notes. Voted in favor, six zero. Is there discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote.
Excuse me.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Hi, sir. Dave McDonald, 306 Fair Oaks Lane. Just clarifying question, there were a couple of item, extra items that were on this list that had been removed in the draft or the final version that was provided tonight. I was looking for an explanation.
Both of those items, one did appear before our committee. And questions that we had and questions the capital budget had. It was agreed on by all the parties that that, and that was the Beachwood Playground, that that would be addressed in the spring. An item like that's usually in spring town meetings, not specials. And the other was a lacrosse wall. And that never materialized at all. We have it on here, just in the event that they did come into us with a proposal so we could vote on it, but neither of them were ready for, for approval at this point.
Thank you. Is there other discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote on the motion under Article six. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is approved unanimously. Article seven, creation of a revolving fund for public health programs. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. It does require majority vote for adoption. Our Town Manager, Mr. Chris Senior.
This is a new revolving fund. The town has long done flu vaccinations and all. But the, the vaccination clinics the towns have, the town is doing, and I should say really, the Board of Public Health is doing, have expanded and the reimbursement process of them has gotten somewhat complicated. So this is both a, just a simplification. It's also, it makes it easier for the accountant to be able to track when the payments come in and all of this. So it's, it's, the money is comparatively small, but it's going to be easier to track and manage the cost for this in a revolving.
Thank you. The Select Board has recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. The Advisory Committee also recommended approval by a vote of eight to zero. And the Board of Public Health recommended approval by a vote of three to zero. Is there discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote on the motion. We'll proceed to a voice vote on the motion under Article Seven. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is adopted unanimously. Article Eight, Transfer of Funds Received from the National Opioid Settlement. It's proposed that this motion be indefinitely postponed. May I have a motion for indefinite postponement? Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you, is there any discussion? Mr. Senior.
I just want to explain why. So the town is getting money from the National Opioid Settlement, which is great. Unfortunately, the state hasn't clarified the process yet for using the money. So we were hoping it would be ready for town meeting. It's just not. So that's the only reason this is being postponed, because the state hasn't caught up with this regulation.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Does the motion for indefinite postponement does require majority vote for adoption? All those in favor of the motion for indefinite postponement under Article Eight, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is adopted unanimously. Article Nine, Easement from First Parish Church to Access Clock Tower. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you, requires majority vote for adoption. Our town manager, Chris Senior.
The, the town clock has been in the First Parish Tower since 1865. We are now in the process of getting a contractor to come and do some major renovations. It's a beautiful historic, very complicated structure. It turns out we can't locate, though the church has no problems coming in and out. We don't have anything in writing and council said we probably should have something in writing. So this just allows that formal document to be created and this like would accept.
Thank you. The Select Board has recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. And Advisory Committee has recommended approval by a vote of eight to zero. Is there discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote on the motion under Article Nine. Requires majority vote for adoption. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is adopted unanimously. Article Ten, Wetlands Protection Bylaws, Updated Definitions, Resource Area. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded. Again, our town manager, Chris Senior.
Our conservation agent, Charlotte Peckel, is here tonight, I, I believe, if, if we need her to speak. So these are just quick updates, the Conservation Commission thought were needed. And they've been vetted. And again, if anyone has any questions, Charlotte is here to answer them.
The Select Board has recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. Advisory Committee has recommended approval by a vote of seven to zero. And the Conservation Commission recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. Is there any discussions or any questions? Are there any questions?
Chris Davis, 19 Heather Drive. I, it would really help to get a explanation as to what you're looking to do to the wetland bylaws. Why?
Hi, thank you. Charlotte Peckel, Conservation Agent. So basically with these changes, we're proposing for the definitions for our resource areas that we protect. So the riverfront area and Vernal Pool are both resource areas protected by the Wetlands Protection Act in our bylaws. And so basically, the purpose of this revision is to kind of streamline the definitions in accordance with state regulations. Also, our rules and regulations actually have a lot of this language already. And so we really just want to be consistent with updating that language in the bylaws as well. So for the riverfront area, a lot of this language is mostly referring to the Wetland Protection Act. And then for the Vernal Pool definition, a lot of the language is from the Wetlands Protection Act. And it's also from the National Heritage Endangered Species Program, Vernal Pool Guidelines from 2020.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? Sure, a follow-up, Mr. Davis.
There's a follow-up. So this, this will increase wetland bufflers for pretty much any stream, whether it's perennial or non-perennial, to 200 feet. Is that fair?
Um, so our rules and regulations in our bylaws technically already do protect that. We're really just trying to make the definition a little bit simpler because the Wetlands Protection Act has a very specific definition with the streams. And so our bylaws already do say that. We're really just kind of revising the language to be a little bit more clear.
It does, does now add non-perennial streams to the 200-foot buffer? Pretty significant change, I think.
Well, we do have in our bylaws that we protect within 100 feet of any pond, river, or stream. So that's already there. And so in this language, we write as defined in the act. So we're really just deferring to the definition in the Wetland Protection Act.
So this is a state requirement and typically includes perennial and non-perennial?
The state act does include perennial mostly.
So this removes perennial and now it makes it both perennial and non-perennial. So if you, if I'm understanding correctly, anybody that has a stream on their property that's non-perennial, so it dries up for six months during the year, you can't do anything within 200 feet of that stream now. It's a major impact, a major expansion of what restrictions are on anything you can do on your property. So everyone should kind of think about that, because this is a pretty wet town.
Thank you. Is there further discussion, sir?
I'm Bill, 63 Howe Road, and the vice of the Concom. I'd like to clarify that it does not apply to ephemeral streams. Perennial streams are well-defined in the state bylaw. And this does not change any of that. With regard to referring to the 200-foot riverfront, that is not a buffer. That is the resource. And the state is very clear about that. And it's also pretty clear about what you can do and what you can't.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? Thank you, we'll proceed to a voice vote on the motion under Article Ten. Requires majority vote for adoption. All those in favor of the motion under Article Ten, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is adopted by the requisite majority vote. Article Eleven, Public Safety Communication Towers. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded. It does require two-thirds vote for adoption. I recognize our town manager, Mr. Chris Senior.
So staff have been working on this, particularly our public safety and NIT staff. The north side of town, if anyone has, lives up there, is driving through there, is really horrible cell service in good times. The town has made an emergency, has added an emergency call box over by Rocky Beach. For safety purposes, we've had some incidents there as more and more people have been using it since the pandemic. That, that allows for communication, so people can call. It also allows the neighborhood to get down there if there's any kind of problems. That said, it doesn't deal with the routine communication troubles. So the town has been working actively with all the cell carriers, particularly Verizon and AT&amp;T, to, to, to look at the gaps in coverage. And that whole, like, in the north side of town is very problematic, particularly as you go down towards the ocean. And the, this, a site has been identified in Willwright Park that, that might work. And it's kind of tucked away. There's a lot more work that will have to be done. That said, this is the first step towards that, is allow the town to, to work towards identifying and finalizing that site with the carriers. And then swapping a little piece of land in another location if we need to do that. Any further action would have to come back before a town meeting if we leased land or got a carrier. So this is not the last bite, this is only the first bite at moving this project forward. Again, the key is that that whole area is just, it's bad. It's bad cell coverage. And as Verizon in particular gets out of the landline business, that's, that's what people have. They have cell phones. And we really need to improve that. The private sector has not done a very good job of filling this need. And again, the, the IT staff and our public safety staff, particularly the folks, the police department, have been working to identify these locations. And, and this will start that process or continue that process more formally and allow us to really explore the ability to site a tower tucked into Willwright Park.
Thank you. The Select Board recommends approval by a vote of five to zero. And the Advisory Committee recommends approval by a vote of eight to zero. Is there discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote, motion under Article Eleven. Requires two-thirds vote for adoption. All those in favor of the motion under Article Eleven, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is adopted unanimously. Article Twelve, Removal of Cohasset Police Department from Civil Service. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded. Our town manager, oh, sorry, requires majority vote for adoption. Our town manager, Chris Senior.
I promised the last article you have to listen to me on tonight. So back in 1928, town meeting authorized Cohasset to join the civil service system for police. After lots and lots of years and lots of concerns, the proposal tonight is to begin the process to get us out of civil service and to let the town set up its, its own independent process for hiring and promoting police officers. We're here today after a negotiation with the police unit. They're, they're in favor of it. We, we, we put a little, as I mentioned earlier, a little educational incentive in there for this, for this right. And they're going to support us all the way through, going to the, we have to go to legislature. From a memo for Bill Quigley, which is up on the website, it's a 19-page memo. You can learn everything you've ever wanted to know about getting out of civil service. I'll quote a couple of lines. "The current civil service system overemphasizes the written exam, restricts selection to a narrow pool, and opposes on the town cumbersome procedures." That's the least of it. So what, what civil service was meant to do, it no longer does. The, another quote from Bill, Chief Quigley, "The town of Cohasset would benefit by withdrawing from civil service and creating its own system of hiring and promotion." That would allow the town to recruit differently. And again, we still have to test, we'd still have to, you know, do it by quality. We have lots of models to work with. We also have some neighbors who are already doing this, Norwell is one. And there's other communities nearby that we could partner with, so we can have a more robust system. But something that's geared towards skills and need and locality, not just people who are really good test takers. So we're excited about this. It's going to be a little bit of an effort. This vote would authorize this like word to do that home rule petition. And then we'd have to create the system and, and then, you know, vet that all. But we're excited, Chief Quigley's in the back, does any other questions? But I, this is a big step forward. And again, we're unifiably walking this way with, with the members of the police department.
Thank you. The Select Board has recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. And the Advisory Committee has recommended approval by a vote of eight to zero. Is there discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote, motion under Article Twelve, does require majority vote for adoption. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is adopted unanimously. Thank you very much. Article Thirteen, Contract Extensions for Cell Antennas at the Water Department. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you, is there a second? Thank you, does require a majority vote for adoption. Actually, despite your statement, Chris, can I ask you to introduce this one as well? Sorry. Reluctant Town Manager, Mr. Chris Senior.
So an encore tonight, thank you for having me back. The, the Water Department has been very successfully receiving rental income for cell towers, which helped with the service on the other side of town. It's on the Turkey Hill Tank, I think, Lee, is that correct? Or the Bear Hill, on both tanks. And this will allow for continued leasing for another 20 years, which, and all the revenue is to Water Department, and that helps reduce rates and, and work on the budget. So it also provides cell service, so it's all, it's all good.
Thank you. The Select Board has recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. Advisory has recommended approval by a vote of eight to zero. And the Water Commission has recommended approval by a vote of three to zero. Is there discussion?
Moderator.
Mr. Pratt.
Glenn Pratt, King Street. Just a question, on the previous article, we authorized a selectman to enter into cell contracts for over 30 years. Is there a reason why this one is only restricted for 20 years?
It can be longer. It, this is, I think this is just the term that we're, we're using. If somebody wants to, I mean, if the Water Department wants to amend it, we can.
Well, I just know, it says up to, the other one says exceeding 30. This is up to 20, so maybe they should be more consistent, I don't know.
So Ms. Jenkins, could you step up to a microphone, please?
Leonora Jenkins, Water Commissioner. At the time that we were doing these contracts, they were only allowed for 20 years. So this is why we're extending them for 20 years.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote on the motion under Article Thirteen. Does require majority vote for adoption. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is adopted unanimously. Thank you again. Thank you. Article Fourteen, The Citizens Petition, King Street Sidewalks. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded. It does require a majority vote for adoption. I recognize the petitioners, Madeline Richard and Julie Rollins.
Sorry, I use a Mac. Good evening, everyone. My name is Madeline Richard. I live at 441 King Street.
And my name is Julie Rollins. I live at 12 Hughes Strain Road.
Thank you to the town manager, Select Board, and Advisory Committee, and to all of you for the opportunity to speak to tonight about the current safety and accessibility concerns in the King Street area. So after speaking with town leadership, the wording of the motion has been revised. We just wanted to clarify that the town appropriate $80,000 from available free cash for the purpose of conducting a feasibility study and preparing plans to construct sidewalks and other traffic calming and public safety measures along King Street from Beachwood to Route 3A and the portion of Pond Street to King Street to Route 3A. A study would eliminate any guesswork. In the end, save the town time and money so that a clear picture is created of the possibilities of how to make King Street safer. As described in the Complete Street Prioritization Plan published in April of 2019, quote, "Encouraging walking and biking is a priority for the town of Cohasset. When residents can replace short driving trips with active transportation, it helps lower traffic congestion and improves public health and the livability of the town." Additionally, quote, "The town's goal is to close the gaps in the existing sidewalk network to provide a better pedestrian connectivity to various destinations in the area and eliminate the physical barrier for residents to be able to use roads for other purposes than just driving." So many of you have likely driven along beautiful King Street, which runs parallel to 3A and connects Beachwood Street and the intersection of Stop and Shop Plaza. This portion of King Street includes Lily Pond, which supports many recreational activities. King Street includes direct access points to numerous hiking and mountain biking trails in Whitney Thayer Woods and Wampatuck State Park. King Street is a densely populated residential area, including 100 single-family homes on this stretch of road. Residents on the street range between families with very young children and elderly citizens.
As Madeline mentioned, King Street runs parallel through Route 3A and has entrances on 3A and Beachwood, which allow for an influx of cars from neighboring Situate, Norwell, Hanover, and Duxbury. This unique challenge of being a busy cut-through street was intensified in 2007 with the installation of the Cohasset Green Bush Train Station. Now this cut-through is attractive to even more drivers as they can avoid the traffic signals on 3A while enjoying a beautiful scenic drive. The street is long and flat for a portion, which allows for people to get up to a high rate of speed, well above the 30 mile per hour limit. Other portions are narrow, banked, or descend rapidly. These challenges have led to a higher-than-average rate of car accidents very close to homes and where children play. These challenges have led to a higher-than-average rate of car accidents very close to homes and where children play. The increased speeds and absence of a safe place to walk are of particular concern because of King Street residential nature. King Street includes ten school bus stops where children are waiting dangerously on the side of the road. Additionally, the school district currently grants bus fee safety waivers as they acknowledge there is no safe connection to the schools from this portion of town. Many children are driven to school, adding to the congestion on Pond and Sawyer Streets every weekday morning and afternoon.
Just a time check. You're at four minutes.
Thank you. The study we are proposing is the next logical step to address a longstanding safety issue and to establish accessibility, connectivity, and improve health outcomes for all Cohasset residents, not only the residents who live on this particular side of town. It would create a plan for more central path connection between two sides of the town. The study will provide us with a roadmap to allow residents to safely walk or bike and would reduce vehicle speeds. Safe roads routes to school for children who live within one mile of the schools but who are unable to walk or bike currently. Access to essential businesses at two shopping plazas for residents using strollers or residents using assisted walking devices. A reduction in vehicle traffic at parking at our schools and downtown businesses. And lastly, improving people's accessibility leads to greater community engagement, mental well-being, and connection to others.
Our hope is that Cohasset voters will see the immediate need for this study and plan to be initiated. Please vote in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, for the select board, I'll recognize Paul Grady.
Good evening. Um, in regard to the citizen position, the select board does respect and appreciate that. We've also, in light of that, approved a, we do appreciate the speeds and we do know people do get up to some high speeds over there. Uh, we have approved a light-up radar speed sign, which should be going up there shortly. But in regard to the allocations, what we're looking at, we've commissioned and charged a new roads and sidewalks committee that's going to be all-encompassing for every inch and every one of the four corners of Cohasset. We publicized applications, invited people to participate, and it will be starting up soon. So what we'd like to do is do an all-encompassing report for the town, because each one of the roads and sidewalks that we're looking at do need improvement. We want to prioritize. And, um, King Street will be included in that. I just wanted you to know that. And if there's any other questions on that, I'd be happy to take them. If not, thank you very much.
Thank you. For the advisory committee, Rob Hillman.
You'll notice in the motions that the advisory committee voted not to recommend the article, uh, but we thought we should explain that to town meeting very succinctly. Um, because we did not vote on what's in your motions. Uh, what was before us when we voted was, was the article in the warrant, which is materially different. It was more of a sense of the meeting, um, article than this, which is a specific ask for a specific amount of money. Um, we voted not to recommend a sense of the meeting article. We did not, when we reconsidered this, we didn't have the motion in front of us. We didn't have anything to vote on. So we neither, uh, you know, we, we don't recommend what you're not voting on. We don't have a recommendation as a committee for what you are voting on. Individual members of the advisory committee may address, uh, the questions in their individual capacities. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there discussion? Yes.
Chris Richter, I live at two forty-seven Beechwood Street. And, uh, while I realize the proposal was broader than sidewalks, I just wanted to call out the point that, um, a sidewalk would dramatically impair the livability and value of my home. I live right on the corner of Beechwood and King Street with the one corner of my house being ten feet away from King Street. A sidewalk would almost certainly have to be located right across that corner, um, because across the street is all ledge. And that would require the destruction of a privacy hedge that had in place for twenty years and literally allow pedestrians to walk right in front of my house. I mean, it would have, uh, it would dramatically impair the, the value and uh, livability of my house. And so I just wanted to make that point for everyone's consideration.
Thank you. In the middle here. Yes.
Hi, Kathleen Kissler, four fourteen King Street. As a mom of two children who walk up and down that street to Walgreens and as a wife of a husband who's an avid runner, who often gets in his car to drive to Town Hall to go safely through Nichols and Beach and Atlantic and all those beautiful streets where he feels safe. In the afternoon, he has to wear, uh, or my kids call him a, a highlighter because he's orange or yellow because going down King Street has had moments where he's had to jump into the grass to not get hit by cars. So it is a safety factor. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Oh, and actually, gentleman by the microphone and then the woman here in the middle.
Thank you, Mr. Mo- thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Craig McClellan. I reside at eight Rustic Drive. My question, uh, is directed, I, I think, towards Mr. Grady's comments. Um, Mr. Grady, um, would the town-wide sidewalk study that you spoke of be conducted with the, uh, the same speed in which the proposed study would have been conducted? In other words, if, can we conduct a town-wide study, uh, without any, without losing any time? That we would have conducted the same, you know, the, the proposed study. I, I think, I think it's objectively apparent that we need more sidewalks in town. And so I'm very interested in having the town-wide study conducted quickly. Um, but if it's a very slow process, I'd rather see some progress than no progress. And that's the impetus behind my question. Thank you.
Thank you for that question. Uh, to answer as a parent, I agree with you. Roads and sidewalks are paramount, and what we're planning on for this committee is something not of extended duration. We'd like to get it done, get it up and moving. Try to get financing in place and see where we prioritize and start first and, uh, take the recommendations of the committee. We've got some talented people that I've put in for it. And I hope that it's done in, it's better, it's in an expedition process. We'd like to see it done as fast as possible, to be honest with you.
Um, I recognize, um, the woman here first and then you.
Hi, I'm Ellen Tan, three oh nine King Street, and I just wanted to echo some of the concerns of my neighbors in terms of the privacy impacts of putting sidewalks in front of our homes. So part of why we love King Street is that it does not feel urban or city. I've lived in more urban environments where I had sidewalks right in front of my home, and I specifically love King Street because I don't have a sidewalk right in front of my home. So that would have a really negative impact on us as well. So I'm clearly against it for that reason. I am very much in favor of doing something about the speeds at which the vehicles travel down that street. I'm so glad to hear they're going to be putting up one of those signs that measures the speed because it's really, really bad. So thank you for that.
Thank you. In the middle center here.
Hi, my name's Tori Hannah. I'm at three oh four King Street. Um, I just want to reiterate, like, this isn't for sidewalks. This is to get a study done to figure out what safety measures we need. It's not, I don't want to wait for a sidewalk committee to tell us. Like, our children need to be safe. We have lots of new families on the street, and we need to make sure that they're safe. My child gets dropped off from a bus every day. I have three of them. And I wonder, because there are cars zooming by. I saw one car even inch by the school bus the other day, even though there's a stop sign out. They're not paying attention. They're texting. They're driving at high speeds, and it's not safe over there, and we need to get this rectified immediately. So please vote yes for this. It's not about sidewalks. It's about figuring out how safe we can make it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sandra Perry, sixty Down Street.
A little closer.
Sandra Perry, sixty Down Street. Um, I would like to ask the person on the select committee with regard to the question from the gentleman over there about how soon there could be a committee. I mean, would we have to wait until the next town meeting for there to be a committee and funding to do a study? Because that seems like too long, since I agree with his point that it seems, uh, apparent that we need more sidewalks in Cohasset.
The answer to your question is no. Uh, we've got a preliminary roads and sidewalk report coming out, we hope, in February. Uh, the committee, the next select board meeting, it's going to start to be formed. The applications are in. It's getting, the committee getting up and running. So no, it's, and I want to emphasize, but it's for all of Cohasset, not just King, not just Beechwood, for all of Cohasset. There's a number of areas that need attention. Um, areas, I live where my daughter walks, where everyone's, every one of us that have children, they walk and go to school. So all of Cohasset is a priority of this committee, not just a designated area. Uh, and we hope to get it done as fast as possible. There's no more kicking the can down the road. We want to get it finished, get it up, and get it running.
Thank you. Um, I've got the woman on the right here and then the gentleman on the left and then the woman in the middle.
Hi, Micah Masari, three eighty, King Street. Um, I would just like to second all of my neighbors on King Street and all of the streets in Cohasset that need care. Um, I am a teacher in town, and I spend my days protecting the children to the best of my ability. And I'd really love for the town to show up for this, at least as an initiative, to get this program started. We've been waiting a really long time, and I think that's great. There's a committee for the rest of the town. But, um, we'd really appreciate your support today. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentleman on, on the left.
Thank you. Timothy Mullin, eighteen Hughes Strain Road. Uh, my wife and I moved here about six years ago, and in that time period, we, we, the back of our property is, uh, King Street, right on Lily Pond. In that six-year period, we've had two cars flip over into our backyard, coming down King Street towards Lily Pond. One in the winter, so ice was a factor, but the other was no ice whatsoever. In both of those times, the drivers were not paying attention to the safety measures that the town has and pet, you know, and, and currently enacted. And as a parent of two young children and somebody who doesn't even feel safe letting my dog run too far in our backyard, I would say if it's a, you know, it's a study that needs to be done, it's kind of a no-brainer for our personal sake, being the first responders to those accidents. It seems kind of insane that any, you know, roadway in our town has the possibility of cars flipping over and going up a ten-foot embankment. I would say, you know, for the safety of everybody, including those trying to get into Wampatuck or Lily Pond, it's, it's imperative that we address this now and, and find ways of making this a safer place for everybody.
Thank you.
Amy Glassmeyer, sixty-three, Howe Road. I'm a member of the planning board, and I also am a member of the master plan implementation committee. And I think it's important for the public to know that one of the top priorities in the master plan that was done for the town for the next ten years was to produce sidewalks and safety for people as they walked through town and in the outer reaches. A master plan takes a long time. The reason is because the cost of sidewalks is enormous. And so you have to set a priority based on where, at the moment, the conflicts are greatest. That doesn't mean that they don't change. It means that there is a process that's already exists and that analysis for the individual intersections, for the most part, already exists. So my recommendation would be is ask the citizens to work, go before the planning board, request of the planning board that they take this on in a more formal way, which you can participate in so that we can move this issue forward because it's already been stated and it's already been laid out. It's just a question of sidewalks are incredibly expensive. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, woman on the far right here, please.
Hi, my name's Dawn Lee. I'm at seven thirty-six Jerusalem. Um, as someone who has three small children and can't walk my own kids to Rocky Beach because there are no sidewalks, I do support the measure on King Street. Uh, my question for Paul is that, um, yeah, I understand that you want them to include this with the formal process and the board that you're creating, uh, but is there an expected financial savings by them doing it, by them waiting? Um, I'm not sure I understand the reason for delay.
Was that a question or?
It was, it was a question. Uh, is there, is there a reason other than just having them wait and include their proposals with all the other roads just because? Uh, or is there a reason, a financial, uh, reason to not move forward now?
Mr. Grady, if you'd like to answer, we, could you step forward to a mic, please? Thanks.
I can leave the financial end to the town manager. I'll let him answer part of that. But what I would say about allocating those funds is every road, including, including Jerusalem, I apologize, including Jerusalem, including King Street are important. Uh, kids walk them. They're up and down Pleasant. They're up and down Pond. They're up and down Cushing. They're on every road in Cohasset. And there are accidents on many roads in Cohasset, including Jerusalem, Atlantic, uh, Beach, Beechwood, I apologize, King. And they're unfortunate. And a lot of those are due to drivers, error, people texting, and a number of things. But I'm saying where we take those funds and allocate them is in a town-wide study. That's what we're thinking about. And this road and sidewalks committee, again, it's priority for this board. Again, we want to look at the whole town, you know, as, uh, encompassing everything, not just a street, then move on. As I said, we don't want to kick the can down the road. We want our kids safe, and we want our roads safe. So as far as the funds, I'd leave that to Chris to answer, but what I'm saying is allocating them, that's a chunk of change that might be able to go into an encompassing report instead of just one generalized area, one demographic.
Thank you. Uh, the woman in the blue sweater.
Hi, Katie Dugan, one hundred Black Rock Road, Cohasset. I was a member of the master plan along with the master plan implementation committee. And I'd like to point out that this petition does not acknowledge in the master plan and in the two thousand nineteen complete streets report that there was a number of surveys that were done community-wide. In fact, there are thirty priorities that exist already for sidewalks and other public safety and roadway safety priorities. What I believe the select board is doing, and I applaud, is that they are trying to consolidate the thirty existing priorities, which, by the way, this community has inputted on, on multiple times, along with the requests from the King Street petitioners into a single study to rationalize and begin to look at all the priorities for the community. By moving one of the feasibility studies ahead, we are going to have one feasibility study and then all other thirty-plus priorities, and there's no way to integrate that kind of work. So we will actually be wasting money by having eighty thousand spent upfront on King Street and then a comprehensive one. So I believe that the select board actually is taking this very seriously. They have a sidewalk committee that is ready to go, and they have a report that's in progress. And so they're going to be able to move this together as a community, as a whole, instead of prioritizing one street. And I appreciate the safety issues, and I feel passionately about them. But we can't basically leapfrog one citizen's petition over what was a body of work that identified more than thirty priorities for various areas of the town that need to be looked at comprehensively. So I applaud the recommendation that this be moved to the sidewalk committee. And I would encourage all of us to put, as the select board has recognized, a team together to look at this comprehensively. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rollins?
Thank you. Um, we do believe.
Sorry, introduce yourselves.
Julie Rollins, twelve Hughes Strain Road. We do believe absolutely the hundred and fifty-something people, the voters who signed our petition do believe that relegating this to a sidewalk, an actual sidewalk committee is actually kicking the can down the road. That's what this is doing. The reason I mentioned two thousand and seven is to give some context. When that train station went in, King Street became extremely dangerous. Even before that time, residents on King Street, those of you who've been there a long time know that we've been trying to get sidewalks in King Street for ages. Many, many years. We can't wait any longer. We've had too many people get hurt. We don't want any more people to get hurt. And we are asking voters to take action today. One of the residents, a few minutes ago, complained about the potential of having a sidewalk close to his home. I remember just a few years ago, when a car was driving too quickly, had a major accident and took out half of his hedge. He has a privacy hedge in front of the home. That car took out the entire hedge and it had to be replanted. I would think that property values would be decreased by having cars coming within inches of somebody's home and taking out their privacy hedge. Thank you.
Thank you. A woman in the middle.
Julia Huck, four three four, King Street. I just wanted to echo, um, the comments that were made, um, as a resident and as someone who bikes with my young children, my two young children. I just wanted everyone to think about this. It's been stated as a safety issue on King Street for the specific reasons stated. And also thinking about it as a unifier for our community. If you look at the map, you can see that the yellow line, whether it's sidewalks or just a safer street in general, will now create a unified loop in which you can enjoy. in which you can enjoy all of the scenic vistas in which our town is so fortunate to have, King, Lily Pond being one of them. And as someone who spends a lot of time on a bike, there's nowhere you can go when a car comes with your young children in a trailer behind you, very close, where you could almost feel the air of it on your body. There's nowhere to go. There's a pond to your left and there's very edges of the road to your right, as opposed to there being sidewalks in other areas of the town when you look at that circle. So just thinking about it as a, as a safety issue, as a, as a, as a safe street for us all to then enjoy recreationally on foot or on bike or what have you, even by car, safer and unifying as a community, having more safe spaces. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any discussion with new input? I'm sorry, you've only, you can only speak twice on a motion. Thank you. Is there any other discussion with new points? Any other discussion at all? Yes, sure, go ahead.
Corey Evans, 313 North Main Street. I'm as passionate about sidewalks as anyone. When it comes to the process of what's the fastest way to get this done, it is my belief that the sidewalk study committee is the fastest way to do it. Building a sidewalk is very expensive and $85,000 doesn't get us to building anything. If we really want to build this and the select board has stated this made a policy and priority, we need to fund it properly and then we can come to the town with a real ask to build some stuff. I worry that by our motion, our recommendation was to, the select board's recommendation was to refer this to the sidewalk committee. That way the sidewalk can package this with everything else and come to the town with a real plan that gets stuff done.
Thank you. In the middle, please.
Hi, 304 King Street, Tori Hannah. Sorry, this is like at my waist. Um, again, I want to reiterate, it's not a sidewalk. We're not asking for a sidewalk. We're asking for a study to be done to get safety measures in place. Reduce the speed, put speed bumps in, whatever it's going to take. This isn't just about a sidewalk. It literally is about people's lives on that street. So I urge you, please vote yes for this.
Thank you. On the right, and please be sure that you're making new points.
Ruth Steele, 15 Whitney Woods Lane. I believe in a previous town meeting, the town engineer discussed the possibility of sidewalks in different streets in town. And one of the things that was discussed was the, the King Street opportunity was the most likely one to be through a feasibility study because it is one of the widest roads in Cohasset. And the sidewalks committee have identified, as mentioned in this meeting here, 30 different areas based on studies that have invited feedback from the community members. However, it does not necessarily follow that those studies, whether or not the community members want them, will end up being feasible in the end from an engineering standpoint. My understanding is, as mentioned by one of the, the town members in a previous meeting, that King Street is wide and therefore is more likely to pass a feasibility study than some of the other areas discussed. And I think that going through the study now will help other areas in town realize what is possible and perhaps help move things forward for those other areas in terms of identifying what not to study in a feasibility study. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan McMorris.
David McMorris, 89, Down Street. Down Street's another of those streets that people fly down to get to Wampe Duck to relax. And it appears to me that sidewalks are expensive. It takes a long time to plant them. Trees come down, all kinds of things are involved. The problem isn't so much sidewalks, as it is speed and inattention and cell phones. And it seems to me that it'd be a lot quicker to address that issue than it will be to address sidewalks. And I don't see that they all need to be packaged together.
Thank you. Is there, oh, Mr. Benetti. Oh, and then I've got the gentleman in front of him.
I'd like to move the question.
Okay. Looks like both of you wanted to do that. So a motion has been made to move the question. It's not debatable. The motion to move the question requires two-thirds vote for adoption. If that motion passes, that motion really is just to move to, to vote to stop debate. If that motion passes, then we will proceed to vote on the sidewalk motion itself. So this first vote is not a vote on the mode, the main motion, on the sidewalk motion. This first vote is, do we stop debate and proceed to the main motion? All those in favor of the motion to move the question and stop debate, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion to move the question was passed unanimously. We'll now proceed to a voice vote under the motion under Article 14. Requires a majority vote for adoption. All those in favor of the motion under Article 14, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is defeated. We will move to the motion under article. There's two people standing, three, that's more than seven. All right, well, we'll proceed to a hand count. May I ask the tellers to take their stations? Reiterating the procedure while the tellers are taking the stations. When I call for it, you don't need to do it now. When I call for it, when I call for it, you're going to hold this card up in the air. And when you hold that card up in the air, that's what the tellers will count. If you are a registered voter, you should be sitting either in the main floor here or on the bleachers. So each of the tellers is going to the taped mark on the floor and they're going to walk away from each other and count the rows that have been assigned to them. So Susan, you've got these five rows there and Michael, you've got the five in the back. Okay, all those in favor of the motion under Article 14, please hold your card in the air and keep it up while they count, please. Thank you. You guys got the front of the room? Let's see, you got the front of the room? Okay. Tellers, you guys all set? Okay, you can put your hands down. Thank you for holding them up. Appreciate it. Okay, now all those opposed to the motion, please put your cards up in the air. Please do keep them up just a little bit longer. Left this side, I guess you're set. Keep them up over here, please. Good. Thank you. Put your hands down, please. Thank you. Okay, the count in favor, 73, opposed, 125. The motion is defeated. Article 15, citizens' petition and navigation bylaw. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. It does require a majority vote for adoption. For the petitioners, I'll recognize Mr. Tim Davis.
Thank you all for coming this evening to consider the navigation bylaw. You are joined by over 400 Cohasset and Situate residents who have either signed the petition or added their support to keep Cohasset Harbor in conservation in perpetuity. You will adhere tonight for some who prefer a different process than a citizen petition bylaw. They would prefer meetings with both select boards to come to some negotiated solution. There are others who would prefer to allow several state agencies to determine the fate of Cohasset Harbor. The navigation bylaw is before us because three years of private landowner pleadings and many months of good faith negotiations by our own select board have failed to convince the Situate Select Board that commercial agriculture in Cohasset Harbor is a terrible idea. Ladies and gentlemen, the situation before us is clear. Either we pass the navigation bylaw tonight or Situate will start issuing oyster farm licenses and there will likely be oyster cages in Cohasset Harbor by spring. If that happens, our only recourse is a long and costly process of legal objections filed with the maze of regulatory agencies that each have a stake, with the hope that one of them might prevent the desecration of Cohasset Harbor. Hope is not a strategy. The navigation bylaw is a concrete action authorized under state legislation that enables Cohasset the legal right to governance over the destiny of Cohasset Harbor. If we want to be able to continue enjoying the harbor as generations before us have, we must pass this bylaw. In 1953, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, in the Act of 1953, Chapter 54, stated in summary, the inhabitants of the town of Cohasset may, by bylaws, provide for the regulation and enforcement of rules and regulations for the operation of motorboats in Cohasset Harbor and Cove. By that act, the Massachusetts Legislature gave Cohasset the jurisdiction of all waters of Cohasset Harbor. That is the legal authority for the navigation bylaw, which we'll vote on this evening. It has been reviewed by several competent attorneys, including Cohasset Town Council, and all have found it legal and appropriate under the law. Some may question where Cohasset Harbor is. The location of Cohasset Harbor has been settled by federal, state, and local authorities in their charts, maps, charters, and deeds for hundreds of years. Furthermore, the state has settled that tidal waters are bounded landward by the High Water Line. The navigation bylaw before us this evening has one essential purpose, to conserve and preserve. It most certainly does not take any property from anyone or town that currently owns it. It simply exercises Cohasset's granted authority for the governance of Commonwealth waters above the bottom. If passed, it is highly likely that nothing will change from what has been an existence on the harbor for hundreds of years. What it will do, however, is give Cohasset a strong seat at the table to negotiate with Situate the many issues that impact the citizens of both towns. If passed, Cohasset would continue to work with Situate to place Cohasset Harbor into conservation in perpetuity. This would keep the waters and intertidal areas open for the public to enjoy fishing, recreational shell fishing, swimming, rowing, sailing, and peaceful enjoyment of that pristine area that is Cohasset Harbor. Certainly, we would prefer to have Situate and Cohasset work together to guarantee conservation and preservation protection over the area. The navigation bylaw would encourage the two towns to work together in the mutual best interests of their citizens. No one wants to see litigation between neighboring towns. However, no one, but a few special interests who would benefit financially, wants to see the desecration of Cohasset Harbor. Please join me to take a stand on conservation of Cohasset Harbor and vote in favor of the navigation bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you. For the select board, Mr. Jack Creighton.
Thank you all for coming here tonight. This is a very important town meeting, as they all are. This is a particularly important issue. There's been some questions on the select board about to what extent we want to share some of the legal things that have led to things. However, we did approve on a three-to-one vote, a statement of what we think on that. And the other member of the select board had to leave for the end of the meeting. I think he had to take his child to a lighting of a tree or whatever. But anyway, this is a statement that after many, many meetings that we approved and we agreed upon, by the way, just what Tim meant, mentioned, we have met three times with the Situate Select Board with different members of different select boards. So we have been very, very forthright and strong in trying to work this out. But herein is the statement of the Cohasset Select Board on the Article 15. "The select board supports the protection of a Cohasset Harbor and thus recommends the adoption of the citizens' petition navigation bylaw article. Our reasons are to preserve and protect the natural beauty and resource that is Cohasset Harbor. The select board supports this citizens' petition article and the efforts of all residents of Situate and Cohasset who have an interest in maintaining this wonderful gift for all to enjoy now and in the future. Cohasset is the epitome of a quintessence of coastal community town. And Cohasset Harbor is a crowning jewel in our community. To those, including the children who walk these harbor shores, sail, row, or motor upon the waters, learn and practice the art of sailing, rowing, and navigation, play in its outer harbor beaches and flats, or simply to enjoy the unadulterated vistas and natural relief that is Cohasset Harbor. This harbor strongly stands with you in protecting this irreplaceable natural resource. We strongly feel that Cohasset Harbor is a gift that was given for all to enjoy and that we are only the stewards that were chosen to administer to its inalterable preservation. As there are some shared waters between Cohasset and Situate, it would be inherent upon both Cohasset and Situate to work together in order to pass this wonderful legacy on to future generations in the condition, if not better than that, in which we received it." Navigation bylaw is based on an act passed in 1953. The petitioner for this act was Helen Scripture, who was the first woman ever elected as a select woman in Massachusetts. Ahead of her time in many things, Mrs. Scripture was also one of the, if not the first, public official to openly advocate and work towards the preservation of Cohasset Harbor. And we owe her memory, our thanks for what she did in seeing to its protection. During the 40s and well into the 50s, Cohasset residents spent significant sums to protect our harbor, including the latter purchase of Bassing's Beach and to dredge the harbor, including the areas of our harbor located in Situate waters. These efforts, spearheaded by select woman Scripture, led to a marked increase of boating traffic for all.
Just a time check. You're at four minutes.
Okay. I, this is what happens when a committee writes a whole statement. This is ongoing project has been no cost to Situate, has been in place for over 70 years and is centuries-old practice. Since its inception, Cohasset has been. Since its inception, Cohasset has been the sole custodian, conservator, and protector of Cohasset, including hiring and paying staff, purchasing, maintaining the boats and equipment. I'll skip over some of this, but it will be on the... "We hope that these final steps and the passing of this petition's bylaw will help us as we reach out to Situate Select Board to reach an agreement that will continue to preserve Cohasset Harbor in its natural state. We want to take all potential paths through this bylaw, and we believe this bylaw gives us an important negotiating position with Situate." So finally, if I can summarize, the Cohasset Select Board believes that this is a very important jewel of Cohasset, and whatever we can do to preserve that, we as a town should do. And thank you very much.
Thank you. For the Advisory Committee, Mr. Fran Collins.
The Advisory Board voted five to one. The one was an abstention because that one person needed more information, could not approve this article. We have... See if I can read my notes here. We've talked about this for many, many years. This isn't something to just kick them up. And to say that the town has only talked three times to the Situate Selectmen does not speak well to a whole big commitment to make this happen. I don't think anybody on the Advisory Committee feels that this is not a good thing to preserve the ecological and the water that's out there. But the Advisory Board, our job is to look at things that are being presented to the town, make some decisions, ask some questions, and get some answers. We received just about no information on this. Now, we've talked about this at least three times in our meetings. Nobody has bothered to send us anything. We have had no opinion from the town council. And so we just had to say, "Look, this doesn't make good sense. We're trying to take over Situate's territorial waters. Not a good thing. That's going to do nothing but annoy Situate further. We need to have a long dialogue with Situate. I think there's enough people in Situate that are happy with this, happy with what we're proposing, no doubt about it. But we've got to go ahead and negotiate with Situate first before we say, 'Too bad, we've taken over. You're out of business.' Not a good idea." So that and a bunch of other reasons. It's been a long night. Everybody's had a lot to say. The Advisory Committee votes no on this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there discussion? Sir, Mr. Buckley.
Jack Buckley, 272 North Main Street. When I first heard about the petition, I was really curious about the Acts of 1953, and I started asking questions. Because as Mr. Collins said with the Advisory Board, it appeared to me that we were overstepping our jurisdictional boundaries. And I thought, "How in the world does an act... What's going on with this 1953 act from the legislature?" And we can't know exactly what went on, what prompted. We can read Pratt's history to find a lot of what was going on in the 1950s, which I highly recommend that everybody does. But I went to the Historical Society, and I asked the question, "How can I find out what was going on in 1953?" So I started to read the annual reports. In Article 49, 1953, subsequent to the Act of the Legislature of 1953, Article 49, the townspeople took the act passed by the legislature, and they accepted the authority that they were granted to regulate landings, motorboat traffic, et cetera, within the harbor and Cove. And they made it explicitly clear that the territorial, the jurisdiction that they were carving out in this Act of the Legislature only pertained to waters inside Whitehead to White Rock. And I've been asking since this came up, how do we square this circle in which the county line divides the two right down the middle of the harbor? The jurisdictions of the two towns collide somewhere in the middle, and we're asked to adopt a bylaw in which we're extending our authority, and there are no lines, there are no zoning, there's no maps, there's no delineation. I agree wholeheartedly with the objective. I understand the strategy. But the mechanism upon which the bylaw is built is faulty at best. And I urge everybody to vote no and continue the strategy, continue other strategies, including collaboration. And I want to emphasize, I fully support Bassing Beach being in conservation in perpetuity. Everything everybody wants to see happen for that slice of earth, I believe, is shared broadly in Situate and Cohasset. And I can't say it enough, just at the risk of repeating myself, we need to preserve Bassing Beach, and we need to make that a conservation land so that everybody can enjoy it. But we can't use a chart from 1948 simply because it says Cohasset Harbor on it any more than we can use Captain John Smith's 1616 chart that put Charlestown in Boston and simply claimed the land because it was there. And I don't mean to be flippant about that. What I do want to underscore is that the geodesic survey that created the report, that the petitioners are using, the chart, is not a jurisdictional chart. It's a navigation chart. And the cartographers who made the chart made a distinction between where they were going to put two place names. It was not an act of outlining or delineating jurisdiction. So when you look at a chart and you see Cohasset Harbor, it's the decision of the cartographers who had to figure out where do we put these two place names? And everybody knows that Harbor and Cove are pretty interchangeable. And so I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you. I see Mr. Benetti.
Russell Benetti, 20 Parker Ave. I noticed the vote from the Board of Selectmen was three yes, one no. I'd like to hear from the one no, what their reasoning was behind that vote, please.
Good evening. I didn't prepare remarks, but I was the sole member of the Select Board who voted not to recommend this. Frankly, I had some political cover knowing that we were going to most likely endorse this navigation bylaw. But my premise for that decision on my part was we had not had a public meeting where the Select Board had an opportunity to really, truly deliberate, go back and forth, ask questions. I have a lot of information from the petitioners. I've heard Mr. Buckley's comments, and I still remain in a place where there were some questions I didn't have squared away in my own head. So for that reason, I voted not to recommend this.
Thank you. Ms. Roth?
Nan Roth, 7 Highland Ave. I've lived in Cohasset for 37 years, but I've spent my entire life during the summer in Situate. I've paid taxes to both communities. The reason we moved here was because of our love of the ocean and that beautiful, beautiful spot in between Situate and Cohasset. It's where I learned to sail, my children learned to sail, we learned to row, to swim. We explored the flats. We had great adventures there, as did my father, my grandfather, and my great-grandfather. Think of what could happen if we vote this down. You won't be able to sail your little boat all the way across. You won't be able to row all the way across that expanse. You won't be able to take your motorboat with your children in a big life ring and zoom around with children laughing and giggling and having a wonderful time because there will be obstructions. And even if we ask Situate to negotiate, they've already declared that they are going to start putting oyster farm plots in that area this spring. So we'll be stuck with them. There'll be no way to stop them without extensive lawsuits. This is also a beautiful, environmentally fragile area. There are multiple birds that migrate through this area and use the flats for their food. Lees terns nest on the rocks. Piping plovers nest on the beaches. Those are both protected species. Why would we allow this beautiful, beautiful spot that is used for recreation and the enjoyment of nature by thousands of people? Thousands of people in Situate and people in Cohasset. Why would we allow three or four people to block that for use from everyone? Three or four people might benefit. The town of Situate does not benefit. Only the town, only those people who have rights to those plots. So I suggest that we vote for this and protect this gorgeous spot so that we can use it, our children and grandchildren can use it, and it continue in the form that it is today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Callahan, 35 Hillside Drive. Well, given Situate's position, I'm just wondering, is this just getting the town into litigation that otherwise the private group can't conduct on its own for lack of standing? Is this just an attempt to get the town to substitute for it and get ourselves involved in knows what, litigation and the attendant costs?
Thank you. A gentleman here in the middle.
Hi, good evening. David Pfeifer, 413 North Main Street. I'm not an attorney. I don't try to play one on TV. And I'm trying to read through a fairly complicated piece of bylaw we're being asked to vote on. When I flip through the rest of the warrant, there is a plain language informational summary for every single item that we've been asked to vote on, except for what is the longest and most complicated on the warrant tonight. And I feel a little let down by that. I don't expect all the town to be attorneys and be able to read and understand something this complicated. I don't think it's a good way to make policy, and I hope that's something we do again moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dugan?
Katie Dugan, 100 Black Rock Road. I'd like to point out for the community that there was actually a public hearing that went on for over two hours earlier this fall, about a month ago, that went through all the details, line by line, of this language. So there has been ample opportunity for the community to understand this. I would like to point out, and I think it's missed, and I appreciate Jack Buckley's description on some of the cartography, that the grounding in this bylaw is actually mass general law. There was a 1953 act. It was passed. It is the grounding for this. So some of the debates that we're having have already been litigated and discussed and legislated on. So we should take some comfort in that as a community, and I recommend that we vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there further discussion?
Over here.
Oh, yes.
Doug McClellan, 166 Pond Street. I'm speaking in favor of the citizens petition and the conservation of Cohasset Harbor. I own land out in Bassing's Beach and Briggs Harbor. But more importantly, I've been using the harbor for fishing and camping. I do a little duck hunting out there in the fall. Don't worry, the ducks are very safe in front of me. But like thousands of others who come to the harbor every year and take advantage of this wonderful resource, it's now being threatened. And I think everybody in this room wants to see Cohasset Harbor maintained as it is today. And I don't see how if this citizens petition doesn't pass tonight, that that won't happen. Situate has been trying to bulldoze this thing for the last two years. I've gone to some of their meetings. I've tried to speak up, and they just haven't listened to me. And I think that now it's time that Cohasset stepped up and by passing this citizens petition, we'll have some standing in negotiating with Situate. Without this citizens petition, we'll have no standing. And you can bet in the spring, there'll be 10 acres of oyster cages, whatever, submerged. And if anyone goes out into Cohasset Harbor, they know that there's plenty of submerged obstacles right now out there. We don't need more of them. And we certainly don't need an oyster farm that's going to just utterly destroy our harbor. I urge strong support for the citizens petition. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got the gentleman here on the right, and then I saw Mr. Buckley, and then Mr. Higginson. Go ahead, sir.
Brian Kimla, 8 Red Gate Lane. I've got a question for Tim Davis. Tim, are you able to post the photo from the original proposed acreage?
Do you have more than just asking for the photo?
I do, but...
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, that's not the one. But I do, but I was hoping we could take a look at that and just breathe. No, that's... Tim, you know what I'm referring to? The original 32-acre plot, which clearly identifies the glades, White Rock, Bassing Beach. It's on the Friends of Bassing Beach website. Maybe that's it. Maybe that's it. It's not quite the vision I was looking for, but everybody here that's familiar with those waters, I'll just ask you to take a minute and take that in. Picture is worth a thousand words. That is the original proposal, and whether it's the original proposal or something short of that, it's impossible for me to look at that photo and not think Cohasset Harbor. And I'm not here to dispute the lines, but I am a believer that this is not about taking land from the town of Situate. It's simply about Cohasset taking on some responsibility for the safety in that area. And I'll just ask everyone to please look at that map and see what kind of impact that would have on that area that we all know so well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Buckley?
I see Cohasset Harbor as well, and I see lots of family memories out there. And I see Doug out there rowing around, hunting as well. I see everything everybody else sees. What I haven't, just to be clear and simple, I've only been asking for what makes this legal. And the only thing I keep hearing is, "Don't worry, it's been vetted. It's been vetted by council. It's been vetted. It's established law." And I keep saying, "Just, okay, show me. Explain it to me like I'm a sixth grader." I am not opposed to the objective. I think we're being asked to do something that actually is illegal. And I could be wrong, and as the other gentleman said, I'm not a lawyer. I don't know. But I keep asking the question, and I have never received an answer, not one. How is this legal?
I think we may have somebody who's willing to respond to that, and then we'll go to you, Ms. Higginson. Mrs. Healy Dipple.
Hello, Mr. Buckley. Happy to respond to your question for everyone at town meeting. So I was designated by the Select Board as the Select Board member to review the bylaw with the help of council, who I will phone a friend if need be. But we looked at a large variety of sources, ranging from case law to acts... to acts from the 1700s up until present day laws, the Constitution. We read through the contemporaneous newspapers of the time period from the 50s up through the 80s, actually, starting in the 1940s. We read through federal statutes. We read through things like the Reverend Harpers Act. We read through the Coast Guard Guides. We, we went to the state archives in Boston to pull the original committee, committee reports behind the 1953 act. We looked at all the maps that were in place at the time, including the official state and federal maps. And we also looked at the current maps that DMF is using right now to permit the oyster farms, all of which had the same conclusion as to what Cohasset Harbor is. It's exactly what we think it is. All the maps are consistent in terms of outlining what Cohasset Harbor is. And with respect to the 1953 act that references Cohasset Harbor, I, I will say we looked at all the research, and town council helped us conclude. We, after this research, that we believe that the 1953 act provides Cohasset with a reasonable basis to pass the proposed bylaw. In fact, the 1953 bylaw that you mentioned, Mr. Buckley, when Cohasset approved that in the town meeting in the spring, in fact, we defined Cohasset Harbor for purposes of just that chapter. And the definition, incidentally, included a portion of Situate. And so we unequivocally knew that we were including Situate waters within that definition. Another fact is that the 1953 act also, and we see the original from the committee report we found in the state archive, someone deliberately wrote in that we had authority to the territorial limits of the Commonwealth. The territorial limits of the Commonwealth in our waters are one marine league or three miles out to shore. And so we knew that we had power. We just chose, at that point in 1953, to take a specific regulation to address the issue at the time, which was our dredging and the increased boat traffic in that particular area. But that does not mean that we do not have the power to regulate Cohasset Harbor, including three miles out. That is what we got. And so we looked at other laws as well because the Attorney General's review with this bylaw is going to be whether the proposed bylaw is inconsistent with any other state laws or the Constitution. So we did an extensive review of state law as well, which, again, I can have council come up and talk about. But bottom line is, we did not find a state law that was otherwise inconsistent with the proposed bylaw. And, and I will just say, listen, the Select Board recognizes that there is litigation risk. If there was a silver bullet, we won't be sitting here right now talking about it. But we think that this is reasonable. We think that there is a reasonable basis for this. We think that Cohasset Harbor is worth fighting to preserve and protect. And so I'm happy to defer to.
Time check, you're up on four minutes.
I'm happy to defer to council for more specific legal analysis, but I wanted to share with town meeting a pretty extensive review that we did. And, you know, we wish that we could share a lot of specifics, but at the same time, we are trying to negotiate with Situate, being mindful of their threats of litigation, but still trying to work through, even if this bylaw passes, still trying to work through a deal with them to reach an intermunicipal harbor agreement to see if we can reach resolution short of litigation.
Thank you. Mr. Higgins?
Charles Higgins, 159 Atlantic Avenue. For 90 years, I've been looking out at this water, and I can't think of a worse place for a oyster farm. As a lobsterman said, Cohasset lobsterman said the other day, he thinks the first storm will wipe it out. And so by passing this bylaw, we're going to save a whole lot of trash all over the place. So I vote, I suggest we vote yes for it. The other reason I recommend yes is that if Coha, our selectmen need support in talking to Situate. If we don't pass this bylaw, I'm afraid Situate will go ahead and pass the bylaw, and we will have a mess in our hands, and there's nothing we can do about it. I thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
David Farag, 39 Beechwood Street. I've reviewed the bylaw, and the, the congruence of it is congruent with the 1953 act from the earlier legislation. But I'm here to vote for and protect Cohasset Harbor and its navigable waters. If you look at the picture up on the board there, what was going to be allowed for Situate was up to 32 acres of oyster farms, which, if you pull out your calculator, is over 20, the size of 24 football fields. That's how big it would be because you're not going to make any money with one oyster trap out there. You need, you need the large volume. So I'm voting for this to protect Cohasset Harbor and Cohasset's navigable waters, which have been used for centuries by our fishermen, by our boaters, by our yachters, by our sailors. And whether we're a public official, a town meeting member, a Cohasset resident, if, if we're not going to stand up and protect Cohasset's harbor and navigable waters, then what are we ever going to stand up for? So I ask you to vote yes for this. And by the way, I don't even own a boat like most of the people here, so, so thank you.
Thank you. I recognize you, but I've asked any future speakers, well, we've had a lot of debate. Let's be sure that you're making new points. Mr. Ng?
Thank you. I just want to add to what the selectman's explanation of the 1953 law and what the relevance of that might be. And I'm not a lawyer, but I did work in the State House many years ago, back in the early to mid 80s. I had a full head of hair. It was great. But while I was there, they rewrote all the Chapter 91 legislation. And I sat in the House chambers, and I listened to it for weeks and months on end. And my layman's simple understanding of my understanding when I saw the bylaw was the state waterways are under the jurisdiction of the state. However, going back probably 100 or more years, they allow cities and towns to manage the affairs of the waterways. So as long as the city and the town are enforcing the laws of the state, they give the city and town jurisdiction over the waterway, irrespective of, you know, where the town lines are or the property lines. And in doing so, and when I saw it, I said, 1953, it made perfect sense to me. I didn't live here, but the harbor then was probably, the boating that took place then was probably a lot less than what you see today. Today, you know, use of the water has expanded. Thousands of people, as you know, are using it from towns as far away as, you know, the North Shore, come, come here. And in 1953, it probably made sense for the harbor master to cut it off where they did. But the legislation left that decision to the town. My understanding is the town can still decide where that jurisdiction is. And I'll just close it by saying, you know, I moved here 29 years ago, and three quarters of the earth is covered by ocean. But it was this precious few acres that got me here, and my kids grew up out there as well. And I was just sitting here looking at the irony of the town moderator in, in front of the podium, and it's the Cohasset Middle High School skippers. And if you're not a boater, and you're on the fence here, and you don't really understand what's going on, I have an analogy. There's two programs out there. One's more than 50 years old, and, and the other one is more than 100 years old. And kids have been sailing out there ever since. And thus, you have the skippers. And this plan to, I'm not against oyster farming. I'd love to do it myself. But this plan is a serious threat to those two programs. And, you know, I, I think if there was a negative impact to the Little League field or the high school field or the Boy Scout camp, I think people would, would think long and hard about it. I think they'd be hyper, hyper protective, as they should be. And I've seen a lot of things on Facebook that I, you know, I think are toxic, quite frankly. But I think there's a lot of people dismissing the impact that these oyster farms will have.
Just a time check, you're at four minutes.
I'll wrap it up. Will have on these kids sailing out there. There's, there's a banner right behind me with the Sailing Club. In, in the four years that my kids were in high school, two of those years, they essentially won in their division, the state championship in sailing. I think they deserve more. I think they really deserve to protect these two programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jenkins?
Lee Jenkins, Jerusalem Road. As Dr. Wood would say, let's call the question.
Thank you. As before, that's, we've had a motion to call the question. It's not debatable. Goes, requires an immediate vote. It requires a two-thirds vote. Again, we're not voting on the main motion under Article 15. We're just voting, voting on whether we stop debate. If the motion passes that was made by Mr. Jenkins, then we will proceed to a vote on the main motion. Any questions on the procedure? Great. We'll proceed to a voice vote on the motion to call the question. Again, this is not a vote on the main motion. It's the motion to call the question and stop debate. Does require two-thirds vote for adoption. All those in favor of the motion to call the question, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion to call the question was adopted unanimously. We will now proceed to a vote on the main motion in favor of the citizen's petition. Requires a majority vote for adoption. We're now voting on the main motion. All those in favor of the main motion under Article 15, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is adopted by the requisite majority vote. That concludes.
Yes, your moderator, over here, on your left, on your left. Hi, Brian Hose, 29 Heather Drive. Given the potential for this bylaw to be a challenge at some future date, I'd like to suggest we actually have a vote count so that we know the numbers.
Okay, are there six other voters that wish to stand and ask for a vote count? Okay, that's the requisite seven. May I ask the tellers to very quickly, please, take your stations? Please remain in the room. We're going to need to vote now that we're, now that we're going to count it. It's the, the hand count that is going to be the permanent record. So as quickly as you can, tellers. Okay. If you're going to vote, you need to be in the main floor or the balcony on your left or these balconies on the right. All those in favor, please signify by holding up your card. Hold it up high. There's a lot of hands. Tellers need to get a good count, so give them time to get their count, please. Thank you. Okay, I think this side is good. That side, right, you're right. Please keep your hands up still so we can get everybody counted. Okay, tellers got those counts recorded? Okay, hands down, thank you for that. All those opposed, please hold your cards high in the air. Pull them up so everybody can see them, please. Mr. Davis, please sit down. Please hold, hold them up high, hold them up high. Tellers, good? Okay, put your hands down. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Okay, the vote count is in favor, 172, 172 opposed, 20. The motion does pass. That concludes the business and the warrant. Thank you very much for the consideration and respect and patience you've shown and for moving expeditiously. May I have a motion to dissolve? Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. All those in favor of the motion to dissolve, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion to dissolve has passed. Thank you. Thank you very much. Enjoy your evening.